Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Carrangelo?
Present.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Guas?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Winston?
Here.
And for those in the public, Mr. Winston is joined via teleconference. And President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and as we generally do for our very light crowd at the moment, we are going to go directly into closed session. So I may please have a motion. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussions of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second time Mr. Carrangelo. Is there any discussion? Hold us in favor? Ayes?
Ayes.
Thank you. Abstentions, I forgot about that. Motion carries. We shall see you, and I'm sure you'll be multiplied in an hour, so enjoy your reprieve. Okay, welcome back. This is more like it. Welcome to our lovely crowd this evening. Very excited, we have a fun meeting for you. And to kick things off, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, President Lacks. We have quite a bit of information to share tonight. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Lawrence Dorfer Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Alana Traynor, and Joseph Sattori is the principal. On Tuesday, October 17th, I had the pleasure of joining Principal Russ Petronko for lunch at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. In addition to check in with Mr. Petronko, I occasionally like to hear from our students about their school days, how lunch is going, and any concerns they have. Some of our conversations are quite insightful, and the biggest request this day was that I eliminate homework.
[laughing].
Apparently some fans in the audience, too. On Tuesday, October 17th, board members and I attended Mayor Cohen's charity fund gala. This year's honorees were Howard Alexander, Northville Bank, Women's Club of East Brunswick, and our own Danielle Blaylock, supervisor of student services, for her work with displaced families in our community, so we thank her for that.
Can I actually stop you for a second there?
Sure.
So Mayor Cohen's charity fund does help families in need in this town, and we had very, very worthy people that we celebrated this year. Northville Bank does a lot for the community, the Women's Club for 75 years has done it. Howie Alexander is a tremendous asset to the Fast Break Buddy Ball program, but I just have to have a little bit of our pride for a moment. When Dr. Valesky talks about Danielle Blaylock and what she does, one of the things that's the hardest when you're working with a charity and trying to make sure that you get funds and grants to the right places is vetting those people. And unfortunately, right here in our own backyard, we have found a lot of need, and Danielle Blaylock has been at the go-between, and Mr. Hong and myself are both trustees on this fund, and she has, for years, come to us with incredibly worthy families vetted, and every single one of them, she's helped before she's even given to us. She's taken out of her own pocket, she's put them up in a hotel room, correctly, Woo? And so it was a really incredible evening for us. I thanked Tim and Vicky and Heather for joining Lee Woo and I. Barbara was not able to join us that evening, she did do an ad, but it was just something that I always like to point out how important it is, because this truly is a community, and Danielle is such an asset and what she does, so I'm sorry for doing that, but you just-
No, that's absolutely fine.
When you reminded me about that, I just think for people that don't realize how much she does and how kind she is, it was really an incredible honor for her, and so it was nice to be a part of it.
Yeah, and I'm going off script here for a second, because as a result of her work, donations from the mayor's charity fund, from the Educational Foundation, and from our employees as fundraisers, we've collected, Mr. Crotchfeld, is it about $8,000 that we have in an account that is available for utilization if we have a displaced family who needs transportation to get to a doctor's appointment, get to an appointment here at school? Because many times we find they, among anything that they don't have, they need transportation. And I've also got to mention, East Brunswick Education Association was a partner with that, too, and of course, they run the Bear Den, and they are so gracious in collecting and donating and outfitting members of our displaced community. So we have a lot of partners in this that really make a difference. And then back to the long script that I have.
Here.
On Saturday, October 21st, the East Brunswick Band Booster Club hosted the 40th Annual East Brunswick Marching Band Festival. The evening consisted of performances from 14 visiting high schools, following, or followed by a wonderful performance by the East Brunswick Marching Band to conclude the evening. Then on Sunday, October 29th, the East Brunswick Marching Band competed in the state championships at the College of New Jersey's Lions Stadium. The band again gave an outstanding performance and placed fourth in the state within their group size for the evening. The East Brunswick Marching Band includes 81 students from both Churchill Junior High School and East Brunswick High School. Congratulations to all the students and all the staff on an extremely successful season. East Brunswick Public Schools has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education. Now its 24th year, the Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide access for music and education to all students. Hammershold Upper Elementary School Sources of Strength Mentor Program had their inaugural event at Bicentennial Park, making the beginning of this impactful initiative. The program brought together school staff, mentors, and their student mentees for a day that was filled with various activities aimed at fostering connections and building relationships. One of the highlights of the day was a scavenger hunt, where mentors and mentees collaborated to complete tasks and get to know each other better. Additionally, the participants took the opportunity to identify their personal and academic goals for the school year. The day concluded with a meaningful activity where students wrote letters to their future selves, which they will read at the end of the year. I wonder what mine would have said if I wrote something a long time ago. This trip to Bicentennial Park set a positive tone for the Hughes Mentor Program, emphasizing the importance of mentorship, personal growth, and creating a supportive community. A tradition for many years at Hammershold is the ever-so-exciting TGIF. This event is run by the PTA, offers a carnival-like evening equipped with a DJ, games, blow-up activities, and of course, snacks. The students love it since it allows them to see their buddies after hours, and this year was the largest-attended TGIF ever. So congratulations to Mr. Petronko and his staff. Irwin Elementary School celebrated Peace Week with a buddy class activity. Younger and older students drew peaceful chalk drawings and pictures of love and support for our school community. The third-grade Frost students are exploring the properties of water in the Water and Climate Unit. During the investigation, students measured how much water a sponge absorbed. The lesson reinforced science and math skills such as measuring, planning investigations, and data analysis. Students thoroughly enjoy the opportunity to conduct a hands-on lab that allowed them to use equipment such as graduated cylinders and balances. After this investigation and others within the unit, students had a better understanding of water's unique properties that helped them explain weather and climate phenomena. In sports, field hockey won the Red Division and the GMC Tournament for the third consecutive season. Samantha Arnold was named GMC Player of the Year, so congratulations to her. In gymnastics, Sasha Marszynek won the All Around in the GMC Tournament. And Michaela Mandler was selected to play in the High School Girls Soccer All-American Game on December 9th in South Carolina. And we might have a proud mom-
I just was gonna say-
-in the audience here. So Michaela's gonna be advocating for a day off from school to go play soccer.
It'll be Michaela Day.
Over the past year, we have begun to focus efforts on sustainability and weaving that theme into daily operations of our schools. And I'm proud of what we have tackled and accomplished, but I acknowledge there is always more to do. And one of the goals we are going to seek this year is certification as a sustainable Jersey school. Separate trash and recycling containers are staged at all the schools, and our custodians make a conscious effort to make sure the right materials make it in the right container. Child Nutrition has made numerous changes over the last several years to reduce the use of plastics and food waste. It is important to note, we are not plastic-free, but we try to limit plastic when possible. We are still experiencing supply chain issues with regard to some non-plastic alternatives, and when that happens, we do receive substitutions that may be made of plastic. The items used by the Child Nutrition Department are in compliance with all state and federal requirements. Some of the things the school district has done over the past few years, but are not limited, these are not all the things we've done, we are using kraft paper boxes. So our former paper serving boats were lined with a plastic that made them non-recyclable. We replaced basic paper napkins with a product called Easy Nap. They contain 100% recycled material. We replaced grab-and-go plastic clam shells, which are used to store food, with packaging that contains minimum plastic. All of our straws are paper. Plastic ware is no longer wrapped in plastic. All trays are fiber, which makes them biodegradable, and we do acknowledge that biodegradable feature, it takes time. All cups for water are constructed of paper. And interestingly, we average only about 2.3 pounds of food waste at each of our school kitchens every day. When you think about it, the amount of waste that, amount of food we prepare, 2.3 pounds is really a small amount compared to the actual production for the day. Our shared tables have been success, and they have contributed to a reduction in student food waste. And we only specify high efficiency when replacing school kitchen equipment, which we did recently at Churchill Junior High School in that kitchen. Logistically, we've consolidated deliveries that have reduced the amount of fuel and emissions, thus reducing our carbon footprint. And then now I direct your attention to the white box on this slide. This is a screenshot of our energy production from one of our solar arrays on some of our schools. So you can go on our website and see real-time what we're producing in terms of power. It's an interesting exercise about how we're returning energy to the grid, and one of our efforts to remain sustainable. So just a reminder, schools will be closed for students Tuesday, November 7th, and for students and 10-month staff Thursday, November 9th, and Friday, November 10th. There will be a celebration of the extraordinary life of former Superintendent Dr. Joanne Magistro on Wednesday, November 15th, beginning at 6:30 PM. The event will be held in the facility that was named in her honor, the Joanne Magistro Performing Arts Center, or what we call the JM PAC, at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. On Sunday, November 19th, the East Brunswick Education Foundation will be hosting their inaugural 5K Walk Run Crawl Bear and Kids Fun Run, or Bear Crawl and Kids Fun Run. This is the actual race that Mr. Cummings said that he was gonna beat me in, so, and I acknowledge that he probably is, so. Please visit our website at ebnet.org for registration information, if you haven't already done that. On Tuesday, November 28th, we'll host a community forum at our high school, at East Brunswick High School, from 7 to 9 PM. And that night, I will share our district planning for our vision for a new high school or a renovation to our high school, and we'll talk about the need for new or renovated high school. We'll talk about how we're gonna continue to inform the community and all interested stakeholders about what we're doing, and when a referendum could potentially be scheduled by the Board of Education, and what happens after the referendum vote, and what is the financial impact on the community of whatever decision the Board recommends.
Tell your friends everyone should attend. We'd really like input.
And that night, community members may tour the high school, and most importantly, attendees will be able to provide comments and feedback on elements they would like to see in a newly designed high school. So, and I would like to take an opportunity, another one minute, maybe 30 seconds to a minute, to offer an explanation. If you're a high school parent, and if you're watching this board meeting, and you were in attendance, or you've heard communication from me about the issues with our high school with a broken water line, Monday night I hosted a forum at Hammershold for interested parents, and we had parents come out, and we talked about, and I think there's some confusion about architectural drawings. We have architectural drawings of our high school in all the additions. What I was referring to, that we did not have, we did not have what's called as-built drawings for some of the features that were going under some of the additions to the building. Today, Mr. Juliana and I were at the high school, watching and talking with the contractors who are completing the repair of the broken water line, and they actually used a ground penetrating radar to look for things that are buried in the ground under the floor of the school, and marked all those off. And so we can see where lines and pipes are going under the floor. Those things are not reflected on architectural drawings. Those are things we had to bring a contractor out and actually use technology to find them. So we fear that there are other things under the slab of the floor and slab of the building and additions that we just don't know about. So that's what I was referring to, when we didn't have as-built architectural drawings. So I hope that clarifies-
Thank you for that clarification.
Clarifies something.
Thank you for that.
So that's all I have for tonight.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Lot of good stuff, you are correct. Great as that was, now's the exciting part. I love learning across the district. This is my favorite part, because we get to see what the students are actually doing. So thank you to the EBA for bringing this wonderful program to us. Tonight, we are going to have sixth-grade students from Hammershold Upper Elementary School talk to us about their opportunity to go on their field trip to the Dallinbeck Nature Center back in October. Still one of my favorite trips. Students were able to participate in cross-curriculum investigations that were related to concepts taught in their ecology unit and narrative-based writing components. During the day at Dallinbeck, students learned the pond, the various components of the ecosystem, and I am thrilled that they are here to share it with us. So, Dr., Mr. Petronko, who are you?
I'm Mr. Bondi.
Oh, Mr. Bondi. Mr. Bondi, who is my son's karate coach.
Oh, no.
And a memorial student, I'm sorry.
I will see you and raise Mr. Bondi, was somebody I worked with when he was three.
Look at that.
Tell him, just tell him.
Sorry, I know, but he's a child.
You're embarrassing him.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bondi. See the kids, yeah, see kids? One day you'll be up here saying that, and we'll be looking at you saying, "We remember when you were that young." My apologies. Please proceed, I'm very excited to hear.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Valesky, members of the Board of Education and greater East Brunswick community. My name is Mr. Bondi, and I'm a sixth-grade math and science teacher at Hammershold. Tonight, it is my pleasure to be here with some of my amazing students, Brody, Jackson, Joseph, and Hannah. We are here this evening to share about our experience at Dallinbeck Nature Center, right here in East Brunswick. During our trip to Dallinbeck in October, sixth-grade students participated in six cross-curricular investigations that applied to our first science unit, which is called Ecology, and students' current writing unit in ILA, Personal Narrative Writing. During the day at Dallinbeck, students learned about the pond, various components of the ecosystem, and explored nature. Now I would like to turn it over to my sixth-grade students, who will share about their experiences at each of the learning stations.
Hi, my name is Brody. One of the stations I really liked at Dallinbeck was the scavenger hunt. We found fungus, moss, and a beech tree. We were in the forest looking for all different kinds of bushes, trees, rocks, and organisms. Another station we rotated through, words from the woods. We took what we learned in ILA class and described nature using our five senses, the environment around us, and the mood we felt in our surroundings. Now I'd like to turn it over to my friend Jackson, who will talk about our nature survey station.
My name is Jackson. Tonight, I'd like to share about one of my favorite stations, the nature survey. At this station, we learned that Dallinbeck is a deciduous forest. This means that the trees in Dallinbeck have more broad, flat leaves. We also learned about what makes a forest healthy. To determine a forest's health, it is important to survey the forest and collect data to see if the growth is happening as it should over time. Healthy forests have a lot of various growing species and many signs of life. We participated in investigations that included examining for rotting or decay, measuring the circumference of trees, and identifying the trees using the Tree Identification Book. Now I'd like to turn it over to Joseph, who will talk about our Species Richness Station.
Hello, my name is Joseph. Our Species Richness Station, we tossed quadrants into the forest and identified as many different species as possible in one given area. Quadrants are used for sampling purposes. There are squares of a size placed in a particular habitat, such as a forest floor. During our time at Dallinbeck, we were able to identify many different species and determine that there was a lot of diversity in the type of species found in the forest. To finish our presentation, I'd like to turn it over to Hannah, who will talk about the final two stations.
Hello, my name is Hannah. One of the stations I liked was the Pond Exploration Station. We got a net and tried to look for different animal species. Our group found tadpoles. Other groups found crayfish, bugs, fish, and even turtles. This was part of determining if the pond at Dallinbeck was healthy. To do this, we gathered evidence by testing the pond's temperature, pH level, nitrate level, and clarity. Another station that we explored during our time at Dallinbeck was the Soil Exploration Station. At this station, we used core samplers to take different soil samples. We learned about where soil comes from, where the best location is for taking soil samples in a forest, and the different layers of soil like humus, topsoil, clay, and sand. In our samples, we found all the different layers of soil in multiple locations on and off the trail. We hope you enjoyed hearing about our experience at Dallinbeck Nature Center. Thank you for your time, and we hope you have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Mr. Bondi, and your wonderful students who are sixth graders. I remind everyone, these are sixth graders.
Yeah.
How well-spoken they are.
Did a nice job.
So for your sixth graders, I want you to, I'm gonna introduce you to a friend of mine, Chris over here. He's gonna be you in a few years.
The other way around. Oh, you're gonna be him.
Excuse me, you're gonna be him.
If he's gonna be them, they're gonna be you. Poor Chris.
All right, maybe one of you should come up and take over from me. Absolutely. You wanna come up, you can try. I have faith. So Chris is gonna tell us, Chris is a senior, he is the liaison to the high school, and he comes to our meetings and tells us what's going on. So this way you can kinda get a preview of what you have to look forward to. So make it good tonight, Chris, you have an audience.
No pressure.
No pressure.
All right, I'll do my best. Hi, everyone. I'm sure many people were surprised to hear about the news that East Brunswick High School is going virtual for a week, but I know many seniors were ecstatic, given the November 1st deadline. I, along with many of my friends, made a few extra edits and revisions to our supplemental essays, so I think that was something to look upon in a positive manner, given the circumstance. Also, I know we're in November already, but I want to recap on some events over October. East Brunswick High School's homecoming was a big success. We've had over 1,000 students in attendance, and this was without any outside guests. So this was one of our most-attended homecomings of the year, and it was, I mean, one of the biggest-attended homecomings, and something to be proud of. This year, something that stood out was our DJ. He was very experienced, and our hallways look great with each grade's class council decorating them. During our homecoming football game, the East Brunswick Student Council had a wagon parade to support Hugs for Brady, which is a nonprofit organization that supports pediatric cancer research. It was our first year doing this, but many clubs participated and decorated their own wagons, and we hope it's a tradition that East Brunswick continues to do in its coming years. And on the topic of football, the East Brunswick Bears got their first win against Liberty High School on the 26th. I just wanted to congratulate all the players on their hard work over the season, and the coaches, Mr. Steinfeld and Mr. Pike. I know they have a lot of passion, and Mr. Pike is my chemistry teacher, and every day I hear him talking about the dedication and the hard work that the team puts in. And a lot of other sports teams, such as the girls' field hockey and girls' volleyball team, are well into state tournaments and GMCs, and I wish them the best of luck going forward.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for that silver lining. So apparently the high school, so now we have an answer why it happened. It happened so that the seniors can finish their essays. They had the last-
Oh, please, don't blame that on me.
Oh, no, 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 you can say credit, this is a good thing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
This is a good thing.
Yeah.
I'm happy to hear that homecoming was the best-attended, as well as the Hammershold TGIF. This is great. More normalcy for these kids.
Actually, that, I wanted to comment on that, because when Chris said that, and reported earlier about Hammershold, and attendance at the football games, we've seen at our activities more students coming to events this year, and I think it's just great. You know, it's kind of like, we're recovering in such a robust way, and it's good to see all of our students out engaged.
It is. And he's smiling, 'cause his applications are done. Thank you for that report. I hope you guys took notes, so you know what to do when you get to the high school. I am actually going to call for a quick five-minute recess, so our young learners can get home, if they have any homework left, especially since they may not be in the high school, and they will not be remote tomorrow, so. Oh, Mr. Bondi, you're coming back. We didn't scare him away, Heather.
Texting his mom.
Oh, there you go. All right, welcome back. See, who says board meetings aren't fun? So this is your time. See, we let everyone in on the action, so now it brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comments, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. You will be limited to three minutes duration. The secretary will keep a timed account, and I always like to remind everybody, this is your time to talk to the Board. Please never mistake our silence as not hearing your issues. The proud mama of our soccer player and her cohort right next to her will be happy to take any information, so anyone that needs to follow up, you please make sure that you leave your contact information. We will absolutely make sure that a response is gotten back to you. So, that being said, is there anyone this evening that wishes to speak to the Board? Yes, if you could come up to the podium- Yes, if you could come up to the podium and just please give us your name and address. Oh, no, at the podium, if you can give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Name and address, sure. My name is Rachel Botnick. My address is 262 Bromley Place, East Brunswick, New Jersey. My roots in this town are deep. I'm an East Brunswick graduate, class of 1990. I've always been so proud of East Brunswick, and that I live here, and that our school system is amazing. I'm sad to say I do not feel that way right now. To say that I'm disappointed in the state of this district is an understatement. Let me explain. My girls attended Irwin, K to 5. They were nurtured, loved, protected, cared for, and advocated for the entire time they were there. You can imagine how high my hopes were when they were entering Hammerhill. I was part of the transition that happened in 1986, that combined Hammerhill and Churchill for the first time. It was wonderful, and as a student, it seemed seamless. I can't say the same for this one. It has been a dumpster fire of hot messes, one after another. I only have three minutes, so I can only talk about the math program right now. Hot mess number one. Rolling out a completely new math program during a major transition year, coming off of a pandemic, is enough to throw both teachers and students over the edge, even with proper training and support. However, I know that that was never done. There was no proper training, and there wasn't enough support for the students or the teachers. Shameful, just shameful. I'm a 27-year veteran teacher who's been around the block for a long time, and it became very clear to me very quickly that none of the promises that were made by all of you were followed through with. And that brings me to my own students, my own children, my seventh-grade twins, who I trusted in you guys and put them in math in pre-algebra honors, because there was no test prerequisite, and math prime was not a prerequisite. Within the first three weeks, they were failing miserably, miserably. You made an egregious error by rolling out a brand-new curriculum and not training the teachers enough. You left them high and dry, and you left the students out to fail. My kids have come home hysterically crying, saying they're stupid, they're not prepared, they keep being compared to people who were, to kids who were in math prime, and it's disgraceful. It's absolutely disgraceful. And I know that the teachers in your district wish that they could say what I am saying right now, but they can't, because they are afraid of retribution. So, I am here, as a teacher, to tell you, you need to fix the problem now. You need to get out of your political own way, your arguments, whatever it is that you guys do behind closed doors and front, and you need to fix this problem now. You need to look at data, you need to implement differentiated instruction, you need to have D O Ls and exit slips dictating instruction the next day. This is disgraceful.
Your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you.
Disgraceful. You should be ashamed of yourselves as educators.
Thank you, Mr. Botnick. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Yes? You could stay, oh, sorry. Do you want to be?
That's fine.
Should we coordinate?
Hello, my name is Catherine Nguyen. I live in Old Tenet Court. I have children in the schools, and I am an appointed member of the East Brunswick Sustainability Task Force. I have been engaged for five years on a critical concern about violations and illegal activity in the East Brunswick school system, which are causing both direct and insidious harm on the community and the students they teach. This involves willful ignorance of a very important law, the New Jersey statewide mandatory source separation and recycling act of 1987. When my deputy and I met with Senator Booker's office on February 10, 2020, to discuss the global plastic pollution crisis and America's very prominent role in this disaster, along with the necessary steps in combating this issue, the advice was broken into two clear points. Firstly, legislation changes, and kudos to Senator Booker for co-signing swiftly the Break Free From Plastic Pollution Act of 2020 in response to our meeting. And secondly, it was brought up that we need to begin more grassroots efforts to address locally that which insidiously harms us all globally. What is blocking such grassroots efforts is the unwillingness of institutions breaking the law to acknowledge their wrongdoing and correct it. It is awful that, instead of amending the errors of their ways swiftly when I alerted this violation, the E B P S chose an attempt to silence the lawful citizen, bringing this concern and violation to the forefront via letters, emails, and multiple B O E testimonies, by ignoring and harassing letter. These violations occurring in a school district is gross negligence. The role of public schools is to provide for the betterment of a child's future, not break laws that are there to protect the future generation's right to a livable environment. We, as a society and school system, need to be laser-focused on studying, implementing, and achieving best sustainable practices. This is an incredibly worthy goal that helps both our local and global citizens. Presently, the USA is seen globally as such a reckless, unwise country, we are the largest polluters globally, per capita, that our highest officials were purposely shunned and not invited to speak at the United Nations meeting addressing global warming. This is New York Times reported, September 20 of this year. The U.S. cannot even talk. Here is a chance for E B public schools to turn error into further introspection, and an opportunity to lead New Jersey and the nation out of this downward, self-destructive spiral. I'm requesting a private meeting where we can discuss why it has taken approximately five years from when first alerted of violations for E B S to comply with the mandatory source separation and recycling act of 1987. There should never have been any lapse in this law. In this meeting, I also need proof that the district is now lawfully compliant with this regulation, because very unfortunately, I have been told non-truths in the past. Finally, I would like to discuss steps.
Time, ma'am. Thank you.
Moving further.
Your time, ma'am.
Forward to proactively move.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. If you want to make sure that Karen has your contact information in terms of setting up a potential meeting, thank you. Mr. Kona.
Let's see if I can get this done in three minutes. Okay, first things first, thank you all for the time that you spend volunteering. I clearly understand the value of it, and we do appreciate it. Secondly, I want to wish Mr. Winston, who is not here today, a speedy recovery.
He is here on.
He's not physically here. I understand that he was not well, and I wish him a healthy, quick recovery. As the superintendent pointed out, Asbills that are missing, Asbills go missing all the time. In the world that I live in, construction, I rarely find Asbills on any of these jobs. So, as he alluded to, G P R S systems are a great way, cost-effective way, of locating all of those systems that you can't find if you're missing an Asbill. But there are other technologies that are available, and I think the board should spend a little time and energy in pursuing those, to make sure that we have those in place moving forward. Also, when it comes to the water lines and the waterline break, these things are hard to predict and hard to manage, but New York City has been, for the past 20, 30 years, been grappling with this with old water lines. There are technologies in place that can actually, cost-effectively, introduce sleeves into old water mains. It can only be done in the summertime, when you actually shut them down, but that should be looked into. With regards to the new high school and the plan, I would encourage the board to reconsider or look carefully at the option of bringing the ninth grade back up to the high school, but leaving it at that, and also, at the same time, addressing all the maintenance needs that the high school does have. I won't get into too much of that. Unfortunately, Madam President, one thing I want to bring up, in the history of East Brunswick Board of Education, politics has never been a role or something that's been brought into the Board of Ed. Unfortunately, the mayor has gone out, for the first time that I recall, and advocated for certain candidates, and I think it's, whoever that candidate is, should not accept that endorsement from the mayor. I think the mayor's politics should be left out.
Sir, if you could just confine your remarks to matters concerning the board and school district. Thanks.
Fair enough. Also, a lot of passion here tonight. At the last meeting, you had a board member who expressed his views on passion and underfunding of certain issues. Instead of being aggressive and arguing with that person, I think it's important to just hear everyone out, hear what they have to say, even if it comes across in a matter-of-fact, I-told-you-so way. But the fact of the matter is, we could use more funding in mental health of our children. And finally, I'd like to leave it at.
Mr. Kona, your time is up, but for the record, because you didn't state your name and address at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Dar Kona.
Thank.
But can I just leave you with this?
Hang your address. No, you can't. Hang your address.
Three Robin.
Thank you.
Mr. Levitt, if you could come up, state your name and address for the record. My apologies for not asking.
Talk fast. Jack Levitt, 4 Springfield Road, I'm president of the East Brunswick Education Foundation. A few years ago, Mrs. Becker made a request of me, and she said, "When you guys give out big grants, they have the coolest names. Why don't you ever come share those with us?" So, I thought I would share our First Lady of the Foundation grants that we awarded last week, in the amount of $32,134. I'd love to share the details about all of them, but the clock is running. So, Choose Love from Bowman Row School is going, their climate committee is collaborating to enhance their current S E L curriculum learnings with components from the Choose Love movement. Climate change composition at Churchill, a composer is going to come in to write a piece for the orchestra related to the, related to climate change that they're going to play at their spring concert, and he's going to come in and work with them to get ready to play it. Multicultural music makers for $11,595 at Warndorfer. Dr. Sakadato is bringing in musicians from all different cultures, African, Caribbean, Indian, Arabic, and it's going to culminate with acapella group ball in the house, which is going to be at the J M Pack later in the year, $10 tickets. Liz Kenny Stein and Chantel Hagan and Matthew Jansen, who are the A P Lit teachers at the high school, have gotten tickets to see Doubt on Broadway at the Roundabout Theater for 150 A P Lit students. Little Hand's Big Stories is from Irwin Kindergarten. It's to provide updated culturally relevant and responsive emergent books for Irwin's kindergarten classrooms. Preschoolers have their hands all over this. 1335 at Bowman Row is a grant for hand manipulative things for pre-K. Bringing World Read Aloud Day to our world, $6,798, for all the elementary schools to spread awareness to school communities about cultures worldwide on World Read Aloud Day. And then, in addition, we gave two grants to Churchill and the high school for eclipse glasses, to supplement the one we gave to all the elementary schools. So, all the kids on April 8th are going to watch the eclipse. The high school kids are going to the elementary schools to talk to the kids about what the eclipse is and share their knowledge with them, and I did this under time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Yes, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Talber, Six Gloucester Court. Been a resident of this town for over 50 years, and I'm going to start with a quote. "Let's sing for those beautiful kids at that music festival. Early morning, October 7th, sun is rising in a desert sky. Stars of David, they took your life, they could not take your pride. They could not take your pride. They could not take your pride." I think you know the rest of the song. Bono did it. He changed his words to a song the same day, supporting and calling out the horrific atrocities that occurred in Israel, to its people and the Jewish community. Dr. Valeski, on October 16th, it took you nine days to write this. He didn't even mention the words "Jewish community" once, and that, sir, is disgraceful. You had the opportunity to reaffirm the school system's policy on antisemitism and hate, explaining these actions of any kind are not tolerated and will be dealt with to the full extent possible. You needed to show support for the Jewish community of East Brunswick, its students, and their safety. You chose not to. Instead, you implied we should just all play nice in the sandbox. You were sent an email about two weeks ago, asking if you'd like to discuss this, if you thought it would be helpful. You never replied, so that's why I'm here. Bono wasn't afraid. He didn't have seemed to offend anyone. The sphere in Vegas didn't empty out into the streets protesting over the changing of the song. What are you afraid of? Who else are you afraid of offending? Silence fuels antisemitism and hate, and hate is what all of you up there task to obviate, and you need to do a better job, and you need to start now.
Thank you, Mr. Talber. If you can actually make sure that you leave your contact information, I apologize. Sometimes, unfortunately, email can be lost, but if you want to make sure that they have your information, then we can certainly get a meeting for you with Dr. Valeski. Is there anyone else this evening wishing to speak to the board? Okay, no? Okay, just making sure that I'm going to be closing the public portion then.
Please, in the audience, please.
Okay, so, we're going to close the public portion and move on to our agenda for the evening. May I please have a motion for items 1 through 5 for our Board of Education items, moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion?
Does that include the sick leave policy?
Yes.
It does.
Yeah, I just have something to say on that.
Sure, Mr. Sizmar.
I want to say thank you to the administration and Dr. Zimbicki and the union for working together to come to a quick resolve. I think through discussion, a lot of things can happen. So, I thank the union, I thank the administration for the changes that were done to that policy in such a quick fashion for everybody involved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. All right, this is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Wos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for the two items on curriculum and instruction? Moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion?
Here.
Yes, Mr. Hong.
So, the item number two, the new course for next school year. So, I want to give credits to Dr. Bulley and her team. So, each time, you know, they always come up with new ideas. Learning, teaching is a dynamic process at this time. New technology, new ideas always coming up. In order to prepare our student future-ready, career-ready, it's very critical for the curriculum department, come up with new class, new books. So, I want to send Dr. Bulley and your team for your effort. So, each time for the curriculum committee meeting, I always so happy, so to, even I always challenge Dr. Bulley with tough questions, but she did a great job. I want to give her my appreciation. Thank you.
I want to say the same thing.
Mr. Corangelo.
There's two things on this, new items here. Of course, it's one is science, and music is mine. I'm a musician, so the guitar class, I learned guitar, it was awesome, because I am a recording artist, so thank you for bringing that, you know, young kids, because I wish I started when I was a child, so thank you.
Okay, this is also a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Wos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to facilities, may I please have a motion for the two items on facilities this evening?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, and Mr. Corangelo is running discussion on facilities. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Leaving us to financial services before I ask for a motion for items 1 through 15. Is there anything that you're separating out? No, then may I please have a motion for items 1 through 15 under financial services this evening?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Corangelo, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion on our 15 items on financial services?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
So, for the item number 10, so this talk about the internal service profit and loss report. So, when I review it, I realized that children nutrition were already surpassed, we got very good gain, and for the, for the things for the facility renter, we're still going down. So, I think it's a time. So I think it's a time for us to take a look at the renting process, how to promote our own facility. I believe the demand is there and why this is now getting back to previous level. So that is the challenge. And then, you know, technology coverage fund is all going up, but this one, only this one's going down. So we need to take a look how to promote our rental facility, how to service our community's need, at the same time, work against something. That is my point for the item number 10.
Mr. Hong, I'm going to ask Mr. Crotchfield to come and clarify something.
I'm not sure if, what column you're looking at, but we increased our profit from last year, so.
So the facility renting, so we have ended up with $840,000, and last year, audited number is $970,000. So why it is going down?
If you look at the profit for 2022, the year, we made $240,000. '23, we made $314,000. So we are increasing. Also, remember, out of the pandemic, we did not do facility rentals, especially at JM Pack.
Right.
So we're back to ramping up and exceeding past.
Allow me to intercede also, because I see what you're looking at, Mr. Hong. So, Mr. Crotchfield is correct. Our profit, our net profitability has increased. The numbers that you're referencing are in the assets and in the liabilities and retained earnings section. Yes, there is a reduction in the total assets from $970,000 to $840,000. However, I draw your attention to the bottom of that chart in the liabilities and retained earnings section. Retained earnings for the year ending June 2022 was $856,000. Retained earnings at the end of 2023, June 2023, was $661,000. That represents the additional money that went into the general fund to support the district. So we didn't lose money. We were able to put more money into support the school district.
Okay, Sam, can you put the explanation?
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on any of the items this evening?
Yeah, I, I give, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Just real quick, a point of clarity. I'm trying to follow the money on the same, on the same spreadsheet that Mr. Hong, I assume, I think I, if I understood him correctly, he was referring to the East Brunswick Board of Education Facilities Rentals Profit and Loss Statement for period ending June 30 to 23, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, in, in the section, this happens a couple of times. Help me understand the cash flow here. So, as an example, I see retained earnings on the page that I'm looking at. They're not numbered. 856,403, I'm sorry, let me, let me read. And with a transfer to general fund of about 509,241. In each of the situations where those line items occur, retained earnings versus transfers to general fund, I can't seem to locate the money trail of the difference between earnings to transfer. Can you help me with that?
Not in a call like this. I'm sorry. We would need to have a sit down to go over that, but I can't walk you through that just with the financial statement that's here, Jeff.
All right, enough, I appreciate, fair enough. Yeah, I just can't find $350,000 anywhere, and it sort of disappears off the spreadsheet. And this happens, it happens on the next page, 132,194, retained earnings, transfer to general fund, 102,307, and I can't, I can't locate that 30,000. All right, no problem. All right, I would appreciate that meeting, then, and maybe you can explain this to me a little clearer. Thank you.
Joe, do you have?
I can't hear.
Come on down.
He's coming up to the microphone.
Mr. Winston, I'm not 100% sure of your question, but if you're looking where that money's going, if you go to the revenue report on the Board Secretaries' report in Fund 10, there's a line that says "transfers in," and you'll see that the culmination of all money transferred out of the enterprises goes to that revenue line. And it's something that we budget on a regular basis, something that we've worked really hard to have our enterprises make money and offset expenses, taxes, et cetera, in the general fund.
So it's difficult to do that walkthrough, because we're looking at multiple reports, one segment of reports here, which are the enterprise and internal service reports, and then we've got the Board Secretaries' report, which are the financial statements on the governmental funds. That's a, that's a complex conversation to have in a venue like this, and without having, you know, all the, the underlying documents and, and supporting information to be able to show you how that travels through. So I think it would make sense to perhaps have a sit down and go over that.
No, and I'd appreciate that. Yeah, I'm certainly capable of the complexity there. So I'll welcome that meeting and look forward to it. Thank you.
I look forward to the audit presentation, show it.
Together for the board, then, Bernie?
Excuse me?
Then maybe you can put something together for the full.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be wonderful. Are there any other, Jeff, I'm sorry, were you, were you finished?
I was. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions under financial, then I'm going to ask the secretary. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to our four items under human resources this evening. Moved by Mrs. Becker and seconded by Mr. Corangelo. I actually do have a quick question under discussion. This Drexel University internship, I know it's not, it's under legal review right now. Now, this is an internship for students. This is different than our pathways program, correct? This is, how are they doing?
Yes. Yes, this is different.
Okay, so these are going to be not onsite. I don't know who to direct the question to.
This is for student teachers from Drexel University. Student teachers or interns, typical interns.
So we're going to be, okay, wonderful, so that's.
Setting them as students now.
So this is just a new school that will be getting those, okay. I know we've had a lot of them in state.
It's confusing, because I had reported to the board earlier that I was going to Drexel University to talk about our students engaging with their graduate students
Yes.
in biomedical engineering.
Okay.
So we have many different facets with Drexel University, and they're very interested in high-performing school districts and building relationships with them, so.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Is there any other discussion for you? Mr. Hong?
So for this item one and number two, Dr. Valeski or Dr. Bulley or Nico, so can you guys elaborate a little bit more with details how those interns, those students benefit our school, our students?
Mr. Tebbit, you, yeah.
Excuse me, I have to make it lower than the students' needs. Yeah, so our, part of the education process when you're in college is to do a certain amount of time of intern hours, so you can practice being a teacher, or in the case of Sacred Heart, a speech pathologist, with a mentor right with you in the classroom at all times, before you actually earn your degree and can teach those classes on your own. So our students benefit when the teacher, when the student teacher is there, of course. Ultimately, we hope that these student teachers become our employees the following year, and so that means they've gotten a semester, or maybe a full year, of one-on-one mentoring with one of our best educators, and then we have an opportunity to hire them going forward.
Okay, that's for the employment side. How can this still benefit our students? So of course, for those side, okay, they can get their credit required for their degree. And for us, you mentioned that our experienced teacher can cooperate with them. They could be our potential employees here, but how they interact with our students in the classroom?
So they are, they are teaching side by side with the classroom teacher. So for, the easiest example would be ratio, right? So if we have 20 students in a second grade classroom, the teacher will be modeling how to take a small group and work with that small group of students, the student teacher will practice it, and now two groups of students can get small group instruction at the same time from a teacher. So that's one example, but also the colleges are teaching new and innovative ways in which to instruct, and so those college students are coming in with new opportunities, the supervisors, the college professors are coming in and watching their instruction and giving feedback. Our teachers are learning from that as well, and certainly then, our students are benefiting from that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hong, also, it, it also creates a feeder program, because our students get to interact with students who are currently in college, and they see this as a career. And sometimes, they may look at this as a career they hadn't thought about pursuing. They look at it differently sometimes when a student teacher or an intern is in the classroom versus just that relationship with their own teacher.
Okay, thank you.
If I can add, I just think this is incredibly strategic and brilliant in many ways to continue to develop these partnerships with these great institutions that are, you know, training and equipping young people with the tools and resources that are required to really build, you know, collaborative learning environments for our kids, and then to get them in for a year and get them, you know, sort of absorbing our culture. It's just such a win-win, so I really applaud this effort.
Yeah, if they can bleed E.B. Green before they graduate college, that works in our, in our favor, for sure. Thank you. This is also a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to staff development. May I please have a motion for items 1 through 3 on staff development. Mrs. Becker and Mr. Corangelo, is there any discussion on staff development? Mr. Cummings?
Just wanted to speak to number three. The, I think all of these are great, but I really was, was moved by the contract with Rutgers with just the work to promote and implement social emotional learning across our continuum is just such a dynamic and important effort these days. I was really, just really pleased to see that that initiative is underway and know that it's going to be a continued need, you know, realistically, where we are, have these, you know, these issues are present and in front of us, and we need to, you know, find and take advantage of as many resources as possible to really help the, you know, the whole comprehensive learning that our students require and that our teachers deserve. So I'm really excited about this and happy to see that.
And the cherry on the top, there's no cost to the district.
I also like that.
Any other discussion on staff development? Will the sec, no, excuse me, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Is there anything under student services this evening that needs to be separated out? No, then I'm going to ask for a motion for items 1 through 9, please. Moved by Mrs. Becker and seconded by Mr. Corangelo. I noticed there's a bunch of invitationals on here.
Yes.
That's very exciting. So I have a question for you, Lou. I don't know, the 42nd Annual JV, is that 42, and I apologize, because maybe I should know this, that's 42 years we've been doing this here in East Brunswick, this JV tournament?
This is a tournament, I'm sorry. This is a tournament that was spearheaded, from what I understand, by Mr. Noppenberger back in the day. So my understanding is yes, that this has been something that we've been doing at East Brunswick, mostly hosting over the last 42 years. And it's, it's a phenomenal, a great idea for our junior varsity boys and girls, allows them to get that extra experience and getting them motivated to go on to varsity. It's been a real good program for us, and Mr. Maltz has continued doing this, so we're very, very happy about that.
I love that. You know, I know, we see them all the time. I was thrown by the 42nd Annual, because I don't remember seeing, Vicki, do you remember seeing years on this?
None of us were around during that.
Vicki was.
Oh. I don't want to get involved, I'm sorry. I don't.
Mr. Sizmar?
I can't hear.
What, what?
So although I, I support the tournaments, and there's other things that are through the year, booster clubs and stuff, are these fees charged to other schools just offsets? Because I don't see security fees, custodial fees. Hate to be the dollar and cents guy here, but there's, there's huge tournaments that are brought in, and these booster club things and all that. One of the things we've had, obviously, is security, and I understand it's very important. But at the end of the day, as I read these things, it seems like the stuff was offsets for, for trophies and officials and stuff like that. It mentions nothing about the cost for the other services. Security and custodial come to mind immediately. So where does that come from?
Mr. Sizmar, I, I'm only going by recall right now. We'll have to look, but I, I recall this number last year, and I was having a discussion. I think it included security. All, this was an all-inclusive number.
Yeah.
But I don't think the narrative reflected that. Is that the part that you're talking about, because the narrative didn't include security?
Yeah, none of them do, and, and like I said, I, I
I believe.
don't have the length of the tournament and not second guessing, because we don't have the numbers in front of us.
Right.
And I am going to vote yes, so that's, that's the thing.
But we will still.
But you know, 100 per participating school for this tournament, that's going to be over an extended period of time.
Right.
I'm going to say it's not covering it. I'm going to safely say, just looking from, from the, the varsity tournament.
I'm going to double check for you, because
Yeah, I would appreciate that later, and I don't think the numbers are going to cover, but I would, I would welcome that at some point.
Let us look, because
Thank you.
we have a matrix that we do apply based on the, the event, the number of people attending, how many SSOs we're going to have there, how many custodians we're going to need. So Dr. Figaro, let's, we'll, we'll look at both of these.
Also, the, the wrestling tournament is something that is paid for by NJ SIAA. It's our second year that we're hosting it, but they ask us to host it, so they actually foot that bill. That's just for the wrestling tournament, though.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I just said, like, at some point, I'd like to see the number.
We'll clarify the entire.
But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar. Mrs. Becker?
I always like to give a shout out when we approve the funding for the Model UN overnight. This is a tremendous program. I, I don't know if people appreciate how hard the kids work just to get into the program, unless it's radically changed. There's a tremendous amount of research and preparation that goes into just getting into the Model UN group, and then the work they do. This particular conference is in New Brunswick, and it is the first trip. It's a competitive conference, and it culminates, as long as it still does, and Lou, if it doesn't, correct me, in our kids getting an opportunity to go to the United Nations in New York and sit in the seats where delegates from all over the world sit and get to replicate a UN session. And they have topics, and they're divided into different countries. It's, it is truly a once-in-a-lifetime situation, and continue to be so proud of these kids, the amount of work they do, and the advisors. It's a tremendous amount of work for all, but boy, they get so much out of it, so that's my shout out.
One of my fondest memories.
I'm so sorry.
I said it was one of my fondest memories. Chris, do you do Model UN? No? Come on, you're up here, you're doing, I'll get you. No? It's too late now. Unless you want to go back to 10th grade and start all over again, and you can have an apple career. No, no, no.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker.
You're welcome, Mrs. Lacks.
Is there a representative, right? When you were in Model UN, you got to be a representative or a senator? We're passing things up? Okay. That's it for discussion? Then, everyone in favor?
This is a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking ahead to transportation. My apologies. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Now, bringing us to our transportation services. We have one item this evening. Mrs. Becker and Mr. Corangelo, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Bringing us to committee reports, information items for the good of the cause for the board. We have curriculum and we have policy, and Mr. Corangelo would like to start out, it seems.
So we had our community programs. We had our community programs meeting, and a couple of items where the morning and after care has a slight increase, and they're looking for tutors for the morning and after care for homework. What I thought was interesting, too, for morning and after care, the, the staff is trained in CPR and EpiPen now, so that was What I thought was interesting, too, for morning and aftercare, the staff is trained in CPR and EpiPen now, so that was pretty cool. For, when we're off, the kids will be going to the K through four kids will be going to the Bransberg Sports Complex. So if you want to join in on that. And February 19th, the K through four are going to go bowling, so that's pretty cool. What else I thought about this meeting was the adult learner, or the adult portion, they're doing career planning. So I thought, you know, those are some highlights. But I wanted to bring attention to everyone was, I put out a driving class that didn't really go because Mr. Crossfeld researched it very well. And it turned out that there's a lot of problems with insurance. So I put together the safe driving tips. So Chris, this goes in your glove compartment, my man. My daughter is, just turned 17, and I'm trying to explain to her everything. So in my opinion, I don't know if you need to vote or how we handle this, but this should be in every kid's glove compartment, and it's for driving tips. So what do you do when, when you get pulled over? You know, what do you do? It's all tips. What do you have in your car? You know, jumper cables, and how do you do things? Things you check, and on the back it has all the emergency services. So in my opinion, we really need to have this in every high school kid's car. So I don't know how you guys want to move forward with this, but I thought this is a cool initiative that I've brought before, and, you know, funneling it down to this.
I would recommend that brings it back to the Curriculum Committee, and then Administration could take a look at as well.
Well, we did that yesterday, so.
Well, that was Community Programs, not.
Oh, Community Programs, so Curriculum Committee, yes. So Dr. Bowley, if you want to give this a look, then we will. All right, thank you. But this should be in every kid's car at least.
I was just going to ask a question about the origin. Did you create this?
I created this all on my own.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I made it all. And there's more, I want to do more, but this is just a first, you know, blush on it, you know, just try to see where we can go with this. I wanted to add more to it, but I don't want to make it like pages worth, so I thought that this might be appropriate for a glove compartment. You need a cone, you know what I mean? Like, if you get pulled over or something, you need a cone. The kids might have some, you know, be more relaxed if they get pulled over or something. You have a little cheat sheet of what happens when. So I thought that was something that we could do.
Thank you.
That's just my thoughts on, I have other stuff, too, I want to present, but we'll save it.
Thank you for taking the time to do this, Mr. Hung.
Thank you.
Yes, I already reported the Curriculum Committee meeting. I want to emphasize, I want to appreciate again Dr. Bowley, Dr. Floskia for the AI Guidelines Initiative, which is really good things. I have been thinking a lot how, what I can expect from the report, so I'm excited, I'm waiting for the time for the guideline, presented to the entire board.
Thank you, Mr. Hung. Mr. Sizmar.
So the Policy Committee meeting is on here, but it had to be delayed because that's when we had the meeting at the Hughes for the high school, so that got pushed off. I'm bringing something from the September 28th meeting. I was going to bring it up last meeting, but with, honestly, with the massacre in Israel, I just, it wasn't, this is trivial compared to what's going on in the world. But I'm bringing it up at this point. On the meeting agenda from the 28th, there was a second closed session added, and there were simply two words, "Board Governance." This had happened once before. I will use my words cautiously because it went on in closed session. But it was targeted me at the time. So when I saw this two words, "Board Governance," again with no supporting data, myself, Mr. Winston made some inquiries. And Administration did not know the substance of this Board Governance, and like I said, we were given no additional materials. President Lacks finally did respond and said that it was about board behavior with no further clarification.
Mr. Sizmar, if you can also refrain from discussing any content or subjects that are discussed in closed session that is confidential.
Okay, it wasn't in closed session, this never made it to closed session, though I do appreciate the warning, so thank you. So with these two words, that really didn't tell me anything. So the section that it was listed under in the agenda basically is used for discipline of employees, if you look at the closed session agenda. There's very few items you can put into closed session. I asked for a legal opinion on it, and Administration and the President was copied. I received no answer whether it should have even been in closed session. So I took it upon myself, I sent an email to Administration and the President, and I said, "If I am going to be discussed in a closed session with this paragraph it's under, I have the right to have it in open." I received a response from the President, she said, "If you want it in open, let me know." I said, "Absolutely." And Mr. Winston could speak for himself, but he also responded and said, "Let's talk about it in open." Well, folks, this disappeared. And the reason I bring it up, and I'm not bringing up any details from closed, is because there are things that go on in the veil of secrecy in closed session that are annoying to me, and I do have the right to have that opinion. But there's a lot of stuff we can't say what goes on. So like I said, my point is, because we were told the board behavior was about Mr. Winston and myself, this discussion never happened. We both welcomed it into open because we are glad to speak about what goes on with this board. And again, it just disappeared. So we can talk about it in open, or we can have it disappear.
I'm very happy to talk about it in open. I'm very sorry that you were unhappy with the way I did it. As I explained to you, Mr. Sizmar, the reason that I originally wanted to discuss it in closed session was out of respect for you and Mr. Winston. I was approached by the mayor about the fact that you and Mr. Winston went on behalf of the board and asked the mayor to come and have a meeting with us. And I did not think that was appropriate behavior. And so I wanted to have that discussion, again, not in open session, but in closed session, and that was the only thing. So it was not punitive, we are equals here, so it was not in any way aimed to be disciplinary. It was just to be a discussion that, when the mayor comes to me and says that you and Mr. Winston are going to him behind everyone else's back and asking for things, and then, and I won't use the names, and then he also tells me that Mr. Winston was coming to him and strong-arming him to ask other members of the board how to vote in terms of leadership, that I felt that that behavior was a little bit out of line. So my apologies if you didn't like the way I did it, but my intentions were truly, purely just to have that discussion and to say that I didn't think it was a fair thing to your colleagues up here.
Okay, so now I'm going to respond. You're taking the word of the mayor. I am telling you for a fact in a public meeting, and I am not afraid to do so. The first things out of my mouth when I sat down with Mayor Cohen is, "I am coming to you as a resident of the Township of East Brunswick, not as a member of the Board of Education," which I 100% have the right to do. I went to Mayor Cohen because he had approached me in the past. He has approached almost every one of these members sitting up here and asked for coffee meetings about what's been going on with this board. And again, he has the right to do that. We have our First Amendment rights to talk to people. So to sit there and take the word of the mayor, that I went there as a representative of the board, is totally false. And I'm willing to say it here in open session on this tape recording. I went as a citizen of the residents of East Brunswick, and I answered to the residents of East Brunswick. And the problems that we had brought up, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Winston, he can speak for himself. There's been a disconnect between the board and the mayor. One of the things that was brought up, because the response that came in the email thing was that it was a violation of the Sunshine Law to have a meeting with the mayor. That is false. We had a meeting with the mayor. One of the first meetings we had for the high school was a retreat. And Mayor Cohen was invited in, and we, this was a couple years ago, the board members here that remember it. So it's not an illegal thing to do. It's not improper, for me as a resident of East Brunswick, to speak to our mayor, to speak to him about going back to where we were then. We worked with the township more. In these past two years, we haven't as well. So that was what I did. So to sit there and say, "You're going to call a meeting," you could have picked up the phone, and I would have told you right then and there, I did not represent myself. And I will, if the mayor can come here, I will look at the mayor and tell him, straight to his face, those were the first words out of my mouth. So as a resident of East Brunswick, I have no problem with what I did that day. Nor should the board president be calling me into a closed session without calling me first and saying, "Hey, Mark, what's going on?" It was a setup last time, and I can't give details because they're going to bring out this whole thing. It was a setup for a right I had to do as a member of a committee last time, and it was done a second time.
I wasn't part of that. I can only speak.
You were in that Zoom meeting. You were in that Zoom meeting. I believe you were vice president at the time, so yes, you were a part of that meeting.
Mark, the only thing I can tell you on this is I respect the fact that you went to the mayor as a private citizen, but it changed to on behalf of the board when you started to talk about board business and being concerned about disconnect with the mayor's. You just said it yourself, the relationship between the board and the mayor, the disconnect, that's the problem. So my apologies if you felt that it was in some way punitive, but honestly, there's been a lot of these back room, you know, meetings and going to people, you know, and the irony of people are accusing people of being endorsements and all these different things that are coming out. The irony is, you and Jeff went there and had a conversation with the mayor, and if you're private citizens, the board never should have entered the discussion. And so all I wanted to do was have a conversation with the board, because again, there are parts of the conversation that we had that's enclosed, and I can't discuss it, but essentially, the behavior was not really on the up and up, in my opinion, and that's.
That is your opinion, it's my constitutional right to speak to the mayor of this township. And if I say I am representing myself, not the mayor, not the board, I can speak to the mayor about the Board of Education.
Certainly, you can.
I can speak to the mayor about my, the things I do not like about what's going on in the township. And to sit there, like I said, this is not a closed session item. This should be an open session item in front of these residents.
I was only doing it to protect you, Mark.
Where they understand that we are silenced. It's not, you don't have to protect me from anything, because everything I said in that meeting, I stand by. So you're going on secondhand information from someone else. I'm willing to talk about it here. There, it shouldn't have never have been in closed session, and I stand by that. And I still, and I still ask for legal opinion whether or not we should be bringing these things into closed session. Let's talk about it in front of the residents of East Brunswick, who put us in this seat.
And we are.
Not someone, not someone who wants to bring me into a closed session and assume that I represented the board. That's an improper assumption, and I will not stand for it, sitting here in this seat.
My apologies for that, Mark. In the future, I will be, I'm more than willing to have these conversations. As I said, my intentions were purely protective.
Board President, I can clarify. I mean, it is not improper to discuss board member conduct in closed session if that conduct could lead to a violation of School Ethics Act, for instance, if it could lead to a violation of law or policy, depending on what the circumstances. I'm just giving a general statement, but I do want to clarify that it's not improper, uncommon to discuss certain conduct by board members if it can lead to something that might compromise the board, so just want to clarify that.
But I will also add to that clarification. Under that section, the individual that is to be discussed is notified in advance, is notified in advance of what is going to be said, and has the option to have that discussion in open session. So to use that without telling the board members or the employees that are to be discussed prior to denies them the right to have it in open session. So that's why I said it's an improper tactic.
Not necessarily. They don't need to have consent. If I'm giving legal advice on a particular subject, that's legal advice that I'm not giving in public session. I will only give it in closed session because my legal advice is only to the Board of Education, so it's not a Rice Notice equivalent. If legal advice is being given over conduct or a certain situation, there is no public discussion of that. And it benefits the entire board and all members, right? It doesn't have to be about a particular person. An example, a conduct maybe could be used to provide clarification to the other members. So it's really educating everybody on the board, using perhaps a particular instance or whatnot. So that's why it's really more of a board discussion in closed.
I understand, and not to go too deep, but like I said, the section that is under is used for disciplinary reasons. That's why I wanted clarification, if it should even be enclosed under that. I did not receive that. We're blocked from calling the attorney directly. So that was my question prior to the meeting. It never would have gone this far if there wasn't these disconnects, so.
My apologies for that, Mr. Sizmar, and when you did ask for it to be removed, I did remove it. My, as I said, my intentions were purely protection, but when you asked, I did remove it.
Another point of clarity, I didn't ask for it to be removed, I asked for it to be in open.
That's what I mean, to be removed from.
So when was it going to be discussed in open?
Whenever you wanted it to be discussed in open.
I asked for it that night.
You could have brought up the discussion. There's nothing to stop you.
That's okay. I'll let that go.
No one stops you.
I'll let that go. I brought it up tonight. Like I said, I didn't bring it up last meeting because of the world events, but I brought it up tonight.
I understand that, but again, you're also, you're forgetting something, and maybe there's a difference of opinion here when you tell me that you go to the mayor, and when I'm given information that two of the board members go to the mayor as private citizens, but then ask the mayor to come and have meeting, a private meeting with the Board of Education, without talking to the rest of the board. I felt that that was improper, and that's what I wanted to discuss.
Unless you bring the mayor here to say this on record, it's secondhand information that you're relying on. You're relying on his side of the conversation without even, without even consulting with us.
I don't know if it's worth having this continued discussion.
Okay, we'll bring the mayor, yeah. Vicki and then Barbara wanted to.
So, I also didn't necessarily want to have this discussion in public, Mark, just again because of sensitivity towards each other and discussing things that are going to come across as accusations. But I was also told the same exact thing, because.
Are you addressing me or the president? Because I don't think you're supposed to directly address another member sitting at the dais. So you can address the president.
No, I think we're having a discussion. That's, I think we're having a discussion. You wanted, you said.
I will, okay, I will respond.
You said you wanted.
I will respond, go ahead.
Okay, let me just talk, though.
Not about me.
So you said you wanted to, I'm very confused. You just said that you wanted to discuss this issue in public, so I am attempting to do that, but now you don't want me to do that?
So you're, so you were going to talk about my behavior?
No, I.
That's what, that's what I was told the subject matter was, Mark and Jeff's meeting here.
Mark, please don't put words in my mouth.
No, that's what I was told by the president.
No, you haven't, I know, but you haven't let me finish.
You can finish, and then I'll respond.
Thank you. You say you wanted to have this discussion in public. What I thought this discussion was about was not what was on a closed session agenda, but the fact that I was pretty upset when I got notice of a meeting that I was supposed to drop everything and attend as a board member and not be told what it was about. So when I asked the person who put together this meeting, the mayor, he told me that two board members came to him and asked him to have a meeting with the board, without any administrators there, without thinking about the fact that it was a complete violation of the Sunshine Law, and without even giving the board president, forget about the rest of the board, the courtesy of saying that this was going to be approached. So I have a problem with that. I feel that if the board wants to do, because board self-governance is, this is what board self-governance is. If you, as a board member, feel that the board should get together or close-close and talk about inter-board relationships or disconnects, that's something we bring up, and I would, I would welcome to hear that from you. And then we would do it under the guise legally of a close-close board governance and have a discussion about where a board member may feel we're not functioning.
Well, just to clarify, that would be an open, a public discussion, but what we could do in closed is address any particular conduct or incidents that come up.
Right.
And then I would give guidance.
But what, so there's two issues here. There's logistically how to do something closed or open, but then there's the issue, that is, what was going to be discussed was, I'm not happy about the fact that anyone from this board went to someone and asked them to call a meeting of this board to discuss our functioning as a board without letting the rest of us know or asking us if we wanted this. That's what I have to say about this. Thank you for listening.
Okay, since I was.
Mark, I'm so sorry, you're going to let Barbara.
Can I answer after they're done?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to let Barbara speak.
Thank you, no, that's fine. That's fine.
I'm addressing the board.
What? Absolutely, Jeff, I can let you speak after Mark if you like, or before Mark, it's up to you, but.
No problem. I'm going to address you, the board president. With all due respect, residents vote for us. vote for us to handle issues that are important to the community. Curriculum, safety, staff development, human resources. Residents who work hard all day, and then come to a meeting, are concerned about issues that affect their children. The board governance is important, and I do agree that that's something we can work on, as a board. And I believe that our president has made much effort to make these meetings possible, where we work together in retreats, or work on issues in different committees, and sometimes the people who are the board members in these, in different board members, don't attend those particular meetings. What I'm trying to get at, is that this, I understand there are different rules for open and closed, but I feel that a lot of the time, we waste a lot of time, that's an open session, where we have a lot of important issues to handle, that really could be handled other ways, if we work together, through such a thing called a retreat. There's different ways for board members to interact with each other. And honestly, if I'm a parent coming to a meeting, and it's nine o'clock at night, I really don't care who said who to what and when. I wanted to find out about what affects my child, how I can help other children in the district, how I can help the teachers in the district do their job better, and then I'd like to go home. As a parent. As a board member, I can be here all night. My kids know I'm gonna be here all night. That's not a problem. I respect that there are concerns of other board members. I know your heart is in the right place, you care. I said that to Jeff last time, and I know, you wouldn't be here for free if you didn't care. Nobody is questioning that. But, the way that we interact with each other, and as a sidebar, I'll be honest with you, the tone of voice that some board members use, and I'm originally from Brooklyn, so I could tell you I know tone of voice, and my accent shows it, but I'm respectful. And raising the voice all the time, especially to the female board members, is old school. I know you don't mean it that way. I come from a background where they do raise their voice, so I can handle it. I think the other board ladies can handle it too. But, time is moving on, and we're here in the 21st century. If you have an important point, it'll speak for itself. You don't have to, and then cut, and often, and many times, I'm cut off. I know I'm speaking a little long here. I was quiet the whole meeting, so I saved it all for now. But, you know, there are times in committee meetings, where there's examples, where people speak for 30 minutes, I time it, and then when I'm about to speak, then they cite a rule, some Roberts Rule of Order, that I gotta go buy a book to learn it. So, you know, all due respect, we all are important on this board. We all were elected or appointed, or will be, will have to, if they're appointed, they will have to eventually be voted in. But, we're all equal, we're nine, nobody's super special, nobody's, and I think with all that's gone on, Lori and Heather and the leadership of this board have done an excellent job, and the fact that anything gets done, is a credit to them, because every step of the way, there's some kind of division, or derision, or if I'm not using the right term. And again, we all, we all want everybody's opinion to be heard, but there's a way to do it, and for examples, for our kids. If we can't even be respectful to one another, in a public meeting, and yes, she wanted to do in private, why? Because she wants to be an example to the kids, to show them how to interact, and to try to solve the problems prior to the meeting, so that we can work together well in public. Call that crazy, I don't know. But, I think it's an important example for our kids. If we're telling them to go to Model UN, and we can't even get along on Route 18, I think there's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese.
Thank you.
Put my mask back. Mr. Winston and Mrs. Goss also wanted to have comments.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Did you say it's me?
Yes, yes, it's you, Jeff.
Thank you. All right, so, Barbara, your words mean a lot, and I appreciate what you're saying. Unfortunately, we can't have this fantasy of world where everything goes right. And quite frankly, I will take a little exception. Having a board of nine encourages debate, not discourage. I know you're talking about respect versus disrespect, and I'm not going to get into the weeds with you on that, nor am I really going to address anything else you said, relative to this. Me going to, going to the mayor as a citizen is well within my right. Like, everybody who just clapped in that audience, I am a taxpayer as well. I have five children in this district, two of whom are still there. I pay over $30,000 in taxes. And when I see the inability to bridge the gap of this board with this district, brings me great concern as a citizen. And I agree with you, Mrs. Reese, a lot of things do fall through the cracks because of that. But, it is not, I don't know if you said this, if I misunderstood it, has nothing to do with the men speaking to the women, or anything of the sort, but it has to do with this proper governance, if you want to have a meeting. Everything that Mr. Sizmar said, I 100% agree with. You admit there was an individual at, another individual at that meeting, and yet, we absolutely did discuss the potential of having a meeting. And Mrs. Becker, that was really an interesting thing you said, because the irony in that, is that while we were having this meeting, you in fact called the mayor during that meeting. He held the phone up to me to show me, it was you who was calling, and I imagine it wasn't to exchange recipes. So, please spare me the self-righteousness. Everybody on this board is talking to that mayor, as is Mrs. Lacks, about board business. So, that is where I'm at. Lastly, I want to ask a question to our board president, which has been weighing on my mind. There was an article printed in The Tap, and the question in that article was, what have you, or what have or will you do to gain board consensus? And one of the things, that Mrs. Lacks, President Lacks, you wrote in there, was that one of the things you do to gain board consensus, is to have team-building exercise. So, I want to ask you, when did that team-building exercise actually take place?
That was actually, I believe, what Mrs. Reese was referring to, the exercises that I had for the full board, and you and Mr. Sizmar walked out of.
Which was, where was that? Was that, was that in open session?
Closed.
You're limited on what you can discuss regarding the closed session, everyone?
Oh, no. Oh, no, hold on. With all due respect, I know that, and I don't discuss things in closed sessions. But, President Lacks violated that, when she published, was quoted in an article stating something that took place in close. Am I misunderstanding the rule? It does apply to all board members. Or am I wrong about that?
Jeff, I didn't talk about specifics. I talked about team-building and doing things as a board. So, that was just an example. It wasn't a specific incident in closed session. There was nothing that was privileged. But, team-building exercises are something that I truly believe in, because we are a board of nine. It's nine individuals with nine opinions, and for us to get along together, I felt that team-building exercises were important, because we're colleagues. We don't have to be friends, Jeff, we have to be colleagues.
President Lacks, I just needed the answer, and you gave me the answer. It did take place in close, and you didn't position it in that article as something you'd like to do. You positioned it as something you did. You actually divulged a closed-session incident, which by the way, you just didn't get. You just said that Mr. Sizmar and I walked out of, and that was out of closed session. Where does this line end? And I'm gonna go to legal counsel, because really, Miss Lacks, I think your credibility just dropped to zero. You've now divulged two closed-session items, one of which in this meeting, which violates the rules of this board. I will take counsel on this. Two things, one of which speaks to the character of Mr. Sizmar and I, in what our interpretation, without context, in departing that meeting, that closed-session meeting, that meeting should never have been made public, but this lax belt that needs to double down, in the last 90 seconds, on a closed-session item. I'd like legal, I'd like legal opinion on that. Because you said it throughout this meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name here. You definitely don't sound like Matt.
So, I'll answer, I'll answer that question. So, the topic of team-building, there's nothing confidential about that. Whatever was discussed in closed session, that might have led to that, that might be confidential, the context surrounding that, but the topic of team-building itself, is, it's public.
But, has that been brought up in public?
I think-
You can bring team-building up in public, you can bring board goals up in public, you could bring the School Ethics Act in public. It's how you're discussing those issues, and what you're discussing, that may make it confidential. So, just the fact that a board member expresses that they think team-building is important, there's nothing confidential about that, because you're not going into the discussion in closed session.
Okay, Mrs. Goss?
All right, sir. It's still my time. So, I want to say something, in a general sense, that candidates for open positions have been taken off the shortlist, because of their political affiliation. Not saying that, you know, where or when it took place, but it was just a thing that happened one time. Would that be okay? Because, certainly, people could have that opinion, no different than people could think team-building is a nice thing. I don't need an answer to that question, because I already know I can, because I exercised my first amendment right. But, I'm going to go back to what something Mrs. Lacks just said, in this meeting, where she spoke about two individuals, to who she named, Mr. Sizmar and Lacks, that we walked out of that closed-session meeting. Tell me right now, that is not a revolting of a closed-session item?
No, it's just identifying who was present during closed session. If you were to ask for the minutes of the closed session, the content will be redacted, but the individuals would be listed, and the time and the day. That's public information.
No, that wasn't who was present. That's not what she said. What she said was, we walked out of-
Okay, Jeff, you've asked for legal counsel, she's given it. There's other board members that would like to speak, so I'm gonna go to Mrs. Goss now.
I struggle as a board member. I have three children, two who are still in the district, one who I'm very proud to see have graduated from the district, and be thriving in college. I struggle with the amount of time.
We get feedback.
Lift the microphone.
Raise the microphone.
Did he hang up?
No, I turned the microphone off.
It's the phone.
Did he hang up?
Jeff, are you there?
Jeff, are you still there?
You won't be.
Jeff?
No.
I was thinking, I don't know.
That's disconnected.
Okay.
He hung up. That's okay. He's allowed.
As a parent of those children, I'm proud of the district. I'm proud of the education that we're providing. I also appreciate my colleagues and the administrators, and all the employees of the board, and the hours that they spend here. I mean, we're volunteers. I was here last night for two hours, for a committee meeting. It was so worthwhile, and I'm really sad, because I have a front page, a back page. Somebody rushed me the minutes, so that I could report tonight. I'm proud of the work we did last night, and I will not have the opportunity to speak about it this evening, because we're doing this again. And I don't think that this is what I expected, I would be doing as a board member. I am proud of the work that we do as a board. I think that we all are interested in education, safety, and what's best for the community. I really do. I just, in recent months, or perhaps recent years, I am confused by the need to point to people who did, point to people who didn't, laud certain, we're working as a group. The idea of needing to pick apart, we're working as a group. It has been said to me before, across the front of this dais, that I was not allowed to address somebody who had just said something that I was discussing. I was told, not by the board president, not by the board attorney, I was told by another board member. I would like to hear that from the attorney, if I am making a mistake. I would not like to be told by another member of the board. As a professional woman, I find that to feel aggressive. I am not to speak. We have professional counsel here. In light of what Mrs. Reese said, I agree. One of my colleagues just said, it doesn't have to do with the men speaking to the women. Well, ask the women. Because, as one, there are more of us here, but as one, it certainly does impact the way I feel about speaking on this board. I did not grow up in Brooklyn. I did not. But, I do work with high school students, and I am not good at being yelled at, and remaining calm in my thinking about other things. My zen gets a little rattled. I'm not used to being yelled at by students. So, to have someone raising their voice as an adult, in a professional setting, does leave me feeling uncomfortable. It's one thing to encourage debate, it's another thing to feel that division is being encouraged. Back to the original issue. I am sad that we're using this time this way, but I appreciate Mr. Sizmar's desire for openness. I do. I'm an open person, so I would like to say just one or two things about that. I haven't spoken to the mayor in months and months. I think I've said hi at EB Day, like if that counts. I don't even think I saw him at the charity gala. But, I don't, I don't appreciate being represented, as to what I do or do not do, in a public forum. That's not okay. I stand here on my ethics, I put in long hours on committee work, I put in long hours in general, and I do not want to be besmirched in that way. I also want to say that, as far as transparency goes, we talk a lot about transparency, and Ms. Lacks tries very hard to be upfront. I try, as leadership, to be very hard to be upfront. I was concerned to listen to, as citizens, two board members went to the mayor to discuss the disconnect between the board and the mayor. Because, to me, that does feel like a discussion from what's happening with the board. It is hard for me, as a board member, to discern how that is. I just don't feel like other members of the public would have that information, and to have two members go and not discuss that. I didn't have that information in advance, on a personal level, and I didn't feel that that was transparent. And that bothers me again. I feel misrepresented, and I can only speak for myself. But, in this, this bothers me. If we need to do this in an open and public meeting, that's fine. I appreciate the people that are here, but I would rather use your time for something else. I will speak about what happened at the Student Services Committee meeting at the next meeting, but I do want to say, it has been brought up here a great deal about student mental health, and stress, and anxiety, and how students relate. Students should not do this. But, I do want to say, there are amazing things going on in this district that are in place. You were at the meeting, several of you out there are nodding, and I know the camera can't see it. There are amazing things happening in this district right now. Programs at Hughes, programs at the elementary school, programs at the high school. We're teaching mindfulness, and stress management, and yoga as an elective. We are doing great things for our kids, and I'm not gonna mix that in, in detail, with this at the same time, because I'm really proud of one, and I'm not feeling so proud of the other. And I was planning on splitting that up with, you know, about CPAG being here last night, because that is so critically important as well. There was so much good that was done in this very room last night, and I will save that for the next meeting, because I'm proud of what we're doing for our students, and especially about mental health. The district's making a huge effort, and I think that's it for me this evening. I'm sorry.
I look forward to hearing that. And actually, you're right, but you want to know something? Mental health of adults is important as well. Mental health of our students is important, but so is our mental health. Mrs. Becker?
So, just wanted to reiterate something that Frances said, that the minutes always reflect when a board member, if a board member comes in late, if a board member leaves during the meeting, if a board member comes back. So, that is not a violation of anything, since the minutes always reflect our attendance. I'm a bit hard of hearing, so, and I wish Jeff was still on the line. But, it sounded to me like he was saying that I called the mayor to talk to him while he and Mark were with him. Is that what he said?
Yes.
So, I didn't know that Mark and Jeff were with the mayor. Brad Cohen, who is the mayor, has been my friend for, I don't know, 15 years. We speak on the phone all the time. We talk about things that have nothing, I know this is gonna be shocking, have nothing to do with the board or the town. We talk about our children, I don't know, the weather, things going on in our families, how we feel about things going on in the world. So, to say that I called the mayor, and it wasn't to talk about a recipe, I had no idea that the mayor was with anybody, and I probably did call the mayor to say, hey, how you doing? How are the kids? How's the family? So, I don't understand what I was being accused of, except- except calling a friend of mine who coincidentally happened to be with people that I couldn't possibly have known. Barbara, you brought up some very good points. I will tell you something. There's nobody who hates wasting time like I do. I have no patience for it anymore. Call it old age. It's fine. But I also agreed with you about the point you made, that Lori tried to do, about having this discussion not during this meeting, for the very reasons you said. But when it is asked for, requested, to be in an open meeting, I'm not going to say, no, I'm not talking about it. It was not our intention to have this discussion in an open meeting, but it was requested. And who am I to deny the request of a fellow board member? Any of us. You want to have the discussion in open? Great. I'm sorry if you feel it comes under the heading of wasting people's time, but sometimes if something is requested to be discussed in open, it needs to be discussed. I think Mark's been waiting.
Go ahead, Mark. Please.
18 seconds.
Please.
So we're mentioning Marks. My name is Mark Two, so I don't want to be involved in any of this. I mean, I love the reelection, you know, and I don't want any of this problem. My respect, Sizmar more than anybody in the world, you know. Also, when it comes to speaking to women, when it comes to speaking to women, I mean, I hope that everyone in the public and in the world, my daughter, knows that I would never disrespect women, so. Because it was mentioned, like, the men on the board or something. So you all know. I mean, we all don't get along perfectly, but I am very respectful. So, and I've never raised my voice. In fact, I've gone out of my way to be gentlemanly, so. Just want to make sure I'm the different Mark. And I, so I got to represent myself in some respects. And I respect women and men and everybody, right?
Thank you, Mark Two.
Yes, I'm Mark Two.
So you're saying you're not this guy? I'm on my own. That's okay, Mark. I'm playing. I'm playing.
I'm on your own, bud.
So listen, I have several things to say in response to things that were said. Ms. Becker, everything you said about that meeting, again, is second-hand information that you received from Mayor Cohen. You weren't there. Lori, same thing, out of respect but out of truth. This is, you know, taking right from Brad that we went in there representing the board. That's a miscalculation. And I got lost in the whole speaking to women thing. Again, I look at you as colleagues. And I don't even know if I was the one that was a target about speaking ill to women or loud or mean to women. But I speak passionately all the time. And I look at you as colleagues, board members, not the male-female role. When you do something like this, and there was one other thing. Heather, if you thought I said that you went out and spoke to the mayor at the thing or something, the comment was that the mayor had said he reached out to coffee to all the board members. And in fact, when the mayor comes here, I'll have everybody raise their hand who he reached out to prior. Because I was reached out to for coffee probably a year before this discussion with him that Jeff and I had about things that were going on at the board. So, but I don't talk out of school, out of private conversations with other people. This all could have been avoided. I go back to September 26 to an email. I am also requesting a legal opinion from Matt, he's our attorney, Mr. Jacoby. If your request to have this closed-session discussion fits the criteria, that was given to President Lacks, Dr. Valesky, and I believe Bernie was in that email chain. So to sit there and say it's a waste of time to talk about this tonight, let's go back to September 26 when I did the appropriate thing and reached out to the president and administration for clarification for this whole matter. It's two months later. And so we wouldn't have had this discussion tonight had people reached out as they claimed to be, you know, compassionate board members. I asked. I have the proof from September 26. I was never given clarification. I was denied a legal opinion that I asked for. So that is the root cause of why it's here tonight. And I wish, and I will end on this, and I'll say this to the residents of the township, I wish I could say all the things that were said in closed session because I am proud of my conduct on this board in open and enclosed. And I will speak about myself only on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar.
Thank you.
We have some other things we have to deal with. I don't want to belabor this point, but I am just going to make a very quick response. Vicki made mention. Before Brad Cohen was the mayor of this town, Brad Cohen was actually a board member with Vicki and myself. So our relationship with him as friends goes before the position that he holds. As the board president, I am tasked with having meetings with the mayor and can have meetings on behalf of the board. And there are times over the years that the superintendent, board president, and the mayor have had meetings to go back and forth in terms of what is going on on each side, just to make sure that there are open communications. In terms of having coffee, the only coffee I had was actually on behalf of the board after we had some disagreements in public with some of the information that the mayor put out that I felt was unfair to the Board of Education. Other times, Brad Cohen is my friend. And I will speak to him, as Vicki said, as a friend. The one thing I also would like to clarify, because I'd like to end on a more positive note since we started on the note and we talked about the mayor's charity fund, it is a recognized 501(c)(3) non-political entity. And Li Wu and I work very hard on that to do a lot of good in this town because there's a lot of need. And so Brad Cohen, his name is affiliated with it. It is in no way a political organization. It is a charity. And I really don't appreciate people trying to use that against us to say that somehow it makes us in a different relationship with the mayor. Because I have to tell you something. The mayor's not on the board. It's Li Wu, myself, and five other trustees. And just like this board, Mark, we all work very hard, and I've always said that. We are volunteers. And all the work that's done up here is done on our own time and for free. I will say the same thing for that board, and I really, truly hate to have that sullied in some way. And the only thing that I said in terms of your conversation with the mayor was when you just said to me, it's not about a he said, it's you said to me that you reached out to the mayor